Advisor that oversees the investment provider. So you really have a little bit of a firewall to make sure that the employees are getting the best thing that's out there. So the advisor looks, picks out what is to be sold by the provider and also acts in a complete capacity to the school board to defend our interest and the interests of the employees in what's being sold. So at that point, we will, this first process is to pick the advisor and then we have a second process that's going to pick the provider with the advisor in correlation for that process to help advise us on the proposals that the providers were making because those are going to probably be the more complicated types of situations. So Argent has presented us with a plan. They presented one, two, three, four, five, six, eight different people that responded to the RFP to be the 403B advisor. We picked what we considered to be the top three after a conference call with Argent and that was Cornerstone, CapTrust, and Retirement Plan Advisors or RPA. We sat through an entire day almost of presentations, questions, and at the end of the day, we chose Cornerstone as probably the best for various reasons, the best provider locally to represent as the advisor for the 403B product. And that's where we are today and I think the proposal, we just did this a few days ago, so the proposal is to go with Cornerstone, but we still have to negotiate contracts and make sure, you know, run things through legal and do all that. So it's, tonight, we're asking the insurance committee, the recommendation of us is to recommend Cornerstone as our 403B advisor contingent on final paperwork and contracts and stuff like that. So is that a pretty good recap?
I was in on it, so it's good enough for me, but we're going to certainly open it up for questions from the committee of one besides myself and from the public. Mr. Centani, do you have any questions at this time or do you?
I do. So the Cornerstone column on this sheet has a few pieces of information missing that the other two do have, such as, are they a fiduciary for our plan? Don't take the screen away from now.
Can you put it back up on our screen?
I'll open it, like a normal person. All right. Such as, are they a fiduciary for our plan? Describe their responsibility. The other two have yes. There's no answer for that. There's no answer for current insurance coverage. Yeah, they're significantly higher on the, what appears the annual fee and second of the three for the percentage of assets or transaction charges. I just, if you guys could walk me through the rationale and the process used to arrive at Cornerstone, I'd appreciate it.
Actually, now that we're looking at it, I have the original and those answers, those are answered. I think they were just left off the Cornerstone column for some reason, but the answer to that is yes. Yeah, but this has notes on it. Do we have the original?
I thought that's what he said.
Yeah.
Could you just go line by line?
Yeah, we'll definitely have an updated one for the boarding. Okay, let's see.
At least for the ones that are missing.
Yeah, the broker dealer is local. Let me see this.
Percentage of, number of clients with declining contribution point.
Four. Yeah, fifty-two local, for number six, it's fifty-two of local, five hundred and thirty Service model centralized, local. Tools to be used for evaluation investment funds, third party. Describe fiduciary services, form-based. Fiduciary for our plan, describe responsibility, yes. Fiduciary education plan for the school board members, yes. Sample investment policy enclosed, sample agreement that will govern the services enclosed, current insurance coverage, EO five million, two million, bond. Firm compensation or services, hard or soft. Work with clients on commission basis, possible. Firm position on revenue sharing such as twelve B1 fees, shareholder fees, and other sub TA fees.
That's answered.
Okay, I'm sorry, the rest are answered.
Yeah, I don't know. And then some of them, you know, they were taken off of some of them altogether, but this sheet was completed at some point in time. Regarding the fees, I don't know if they want to address that, but I do know that the fee proposal, they were asked, for the life of me, I don't know why, but they were asked to provide both a flat fee and a percentage. All along, the RFP and the consensus of everyone involved in the process was for a basis point, a fee-based agreement. So it's not the flat fee and the basis points, it's either/or, and for all intents and purposes, it's the basis point fee. So really, that flat fee, I don't know why they asked them to provide that at all because that was really never under consideration throughout the whole process. I think they just, I guess they wanted to compare and contrast, but I don't know why.
And part of that was because they were not sure about how much of the, we have a thirty-five million dollar, there's thirty-five million dollars in the fund right now, of how much of that would actually roll over because a lot of it does have surrender charges. So for the part that has not expired its surrender charge, it would probably not make sense for the employee at that point to roll it over. And that's going to be individually reviewed with each employee in the current plan, what, with the rollover, what it might make sense to rollover to lower fees or what it would, because of the surrender charges, they might want to keep some of it in the plan or if they're getting some kind of deal with the previous plan, they might want to keep it in the plan. All of that's going to be individual. So I think they were trying to do a either/or because we don't know if a million's going to roll over or thirty or ten. I think they estimated about half, maybe about fifteen million would roll over and just went with that. So people bid basis points, but we would accept the basis points that would be, that's what it's based on.
Educate me here for a second. These companies here, are these the companies selling to our employees?
This is the watchdog, this is the advisor. Because if you get a provider, you know, in our opinion, your provider could come in, why would they want to sell, you know, anything but the most profitable for them? This way, we have somebody watching to make sure what they're selling is the most advantageous for the employee. So it's kind of a watchdog situation where they can come in and for that, many basis points are sure that they're not selling high profit items, not return for the broker, but return for the employee.
How does errors and omissions insurance work? What does that cover?
So I'll probably either want to ask Matt or maybe Mr. Romagosa, but I do want to elaborate on that. So the advisor firm is going to choose the platform of investments that the provider can sell. The provider is going to only be able to sell from that platform. So it really helps eliminate proprietary products and people selling stuff that they're going to make a higher commission or percentage on. It really kind of equalizes that for the employee. But as it relates to his question, who wants to answer that?
I'm not the insurance person.
It's called errors and omissions. So it's really professional liability coverage to cover them in case an employee would sue them or for the advice that they might be given or feel like they were offered a product that was inferior, that sort of thing.
No problem. Do we have any questions from the audience? Now would be a good time. Yes, sir, if you'll come forward, please. If you, yes, sir, if you're ready. And if you don't mind, just state your name and then we'll take your question.
I'm Larry Broussard with Horace Mann Insurance. I'm across the street, wherever the street is. A couple of questions that I, several questions that I have. First of all, at the first meeting in May, there, at the, when I looked at the agenda, there was a memo that this was being looked into because the current structure that we have is somewhat complex. That's, it was defined as very complex. What is the current process? How would the current process be different from the process in the future? That's one point. On this memo, it states that there are about seven hundred 403B participants now. Horace Mann has about four hundred and fifty of those. Is the intent of the board to discontinue the current providers and have only one provider?
You want them one at a time?
To have only one provider. And there was mention of rolling over possibly thirty-something million, maybe one million, There was mention about the responsibility has fallen upon the board for fiscal responsibility and fiduciary regulations. In this year sometime or definitely next, the Department of Labor fiduciary rule comes into effect that basically covers everybody with the same standard. So the fiduciary rule is one that's quite stringent, how many basis points can be charged, you know, things like that that they allow. The ultimate responsibility in the future doesn't change. It still falls according to IRS regs of some years back, you know, it falls upon the board, which the board's responsibility, whoops, the board's responsibility, that's why I was, y'all got the help from TSA some seven or eight years ago. So that responsibility doesn't really change as far as that goes. The vendor fees and surrender charges, the Department of Labor fiduciary rule is going to take care of that as far as what is the maximum fees that anybody can charge. What are the percentages that would be charged? Is the intent to have the four hundred and fifty people of whom, there are some who have twenty-eight years, some that have thirty-two years of relationships with, not on myself, but with previous agents. I've been here for well over twenty years. And is that responsibility going to, is that relationship all of a sudden have to go to someone who's fifty-five years old, fifty-eight years old to go with someone that is basically new in the arena? The advisor suggests what providers can market. Right now, if someone wants to participate in a traditional annuity with surrender charges and so on, that's their choice. It depends on how do they want to be provided with advice and things like that. But if they want to deal with, without having the surrender charge and the fees, we do have some products here now where someone can go, for instance, New York Life has, they had mainstay funds, now they've got the different product, Ariel Fund, not Ariel, but I forget the name of it out of hand. But there are some funds that don't have the surrender charges, fee structures and different things like that. Matt, you commented about the current provider is not looking for the benefit of the client, but instead they're looking at the benefit of themselves in charging high fees. I want to use an example, and I've used this person as an example several times, not her name, but her situation. Single mom, nineteen eighty-eight, retired from teaching, came to work with Horace Mann. She had about six thousand dollars in the credit union in another parish. She started a 403B, doing two or three hundred a month or so, increased it. I communicate with all of my clients at least twice a year by mail and I talk to them. You know, they come to the school board office, they pop in and visit, you know, just discuss their contracts. Single mom, no child support, nice home, but not anything exotic, always a good little car, took her to work and where she wanted to be, has traveled a bit, more than the average employee in Lafayette Parish, I would say. Today, twenty-eight years later, instead of having six or eight thousand in the credit union or twenty thousand in credit union, she has well over six hundred thousand. Real story. I don't think that, as a matter of fact, I found out about this meeting this afternoon and I had called her to see if she could come and just to attest that I've given her some good advice over the years and things like that. And she said, anytime, when you know that there's a meeting, let me know, whatever I have, I'm going to be there. I've had several people that I've called to that regard. And it's not the same thing about Larry Broussard. It's to say that with someone who's going to follow recommendations or at least some, not every recommendation that Dr. Tagelorg thinks is suitable, does the board go with, right? So as a result, but a lot of the recommendations that I make to my clients is because I feel that that's the same advice I would give my sister or my daughter or things like that. But again, her particular situation is one, but I have many, 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 of that thirty-seven million, I have over thirty-three million of assets under management. So does that affect me personally? Yes. Am I looking out for my benefit or the benefit of my clients? I think the young lady, well, she's sixty-three or so, which is young compared to me, but still, I think that she would say in a heartbeat, Larry always did look out for my interests. So those are remarks that I wanted to make. But if I could get some of these questions answered about, what is the difference in complexity? Right now, I get one form which is directed by the board. What information do I get from the client? Name, social security number, amount they want to contribute. I give that to payroll department, payroll loads it into the database, and that's it. The computers take care of it from then. If they want to make changes in the future, they make changes. A simple process. How will that process be less complex next year? Will we need the person's name? Definitely. Will we need the person's social security number? Definitely. Will we need to know how much they want to contribute each month? Definitely. So what is the difference in complexity? I don't have the answer for that.
Probably Matt will answer that. I do want to just briefly and address, well, Matt can come up and answer your questions, but while he's coming up, I just wanted to address a couple of things. What we're trying to do here is provide a better opportunity and benefit for the employees. That does not mean that you are not doing a good job or as best of a job as you can for the employees. So right now, what we have is a rat race. We have seven different vendors, probably nine, it's nine different vendors, eight of which are selling annuities. So when you say they have an option, they really don't because by the time the eighth person, fidelity, comes in without an annuity product, they've already heard from three because they refuse to hear from nine. We have seven hundred participants when we should have two thousand and it's the process we use. And I'll say that you make a very good point and you prove your point by saying that you've helped these ladies and gentlemen out throughout the years make good financial decisions. But if their annual costs were not three percent a year and they were, say, a half a percent, I think that six hundred thousand that the young lady has may be seven hundred thousand. We're not, no, sir, we're not going to go back and forth. I addressed your question.
Check how many in Lafayette Parish have six hundred thousand.
Excuse me, I've addressed your, if he's going to answer your questions, I wanted to address what you said. Unless you have additional questions, please, if you don't mind, take your seat now. If you do have additional questions, you'll be, I'm more than happy to come, I'll be more than happy to ask you to come up.
Okay, I want to comment on the process. Currently, the process is we have nine vendors and you're right, most of the vendors are selling annuities. Basically, we have one vendor who doesn't have representation here and we added that one personally. To get a lower cost vendor, we added fidelity. So basically, you have these people kind of, I guess, hanging around in the teachers' lounges or making appointments through the principal, through the process to try to speak to teachers. So a teacher come to the teacher's lounge, they may have Horace Mann one day, they may have Valek the next day, and it's real confusing and it's disconnected and there's no like set process. The simplification of the process will be a one-stop shop. We will basically have an education component for the employee that will be controlled by the school board and by the advisor and by the provider. So we believe we're going to have improved education to let the employees know, you know, what's available to them and you're right, we only have seven hundred participants. We should have two thousand. I think that's, we have like, it's close to fifteen percent participation, that's really low. We should have closer to probably forty or fifty percent. If people were truly offered a product that they felt comfortable buying or that they felt comfortable in general, you know, I'm not in the 403B program because I just don't believe personally, it's, I don't believe in the annuity product, but that's a personal decision, but the education process is going to be out there. So when you're talking about process, it will be a streamlined process. The actual processing and all that, that's going to be handled by the investment provider. And what other process, what was the other question?
How will it be less complex?
It'll be, you need the same information, it'll be less complex because you'll have one vendor, not nine vendors. And the products that are being sold are vetted and set to a competitive process to make sure that the fees are the lowest possible and that the products are good products through not only the provider, but the watchdog and the provider as the advisor. Also, by doing this, we'll be able to not have TSA, which is the person we pay, it's a company we pay about fourteen thousand dollars a year to process all this stuff for us, we won't need them anymore. So we'll save the budget about fourteen thousand dollars in not having to pay the TPA to do the work that basically our investment provider will. So from, it'll be a lot less complicated, it'll be cheaper, it'll be more efficient, assuming we can maybe roll it into an open enrollment where, you know, as they're picking health insurance and dental insurance, they'll be able to pick their 403Bs. The teachers are not sitting around with people trying to sell them stuff in the break room. They're basically approached in a controlled manner. We've had issues, I can tell you, I've been called to the payroll office with teachers crying, upset about certain things that they were told that were not true and we had to correct. So we will have accountability. So if something happens, have a teacher show up at eight o'clock in the morning, get a payroll call saying, we have a teacher crying in here, can you come on down? And I, you know, and I get there and she's had, hadn't slept the night, she was highly upset, and that's not the only complaint that I get. I'll be able to call our, either our provider or advisor who we have control over and saying, what's going on? You have somebody who, you know, what's the story here? Is this going to be he said, she said, or she said, she said, or, you know, correct this? And we'll have some kind of validity rather than just somebody that's selling investments out there in our schools. And I, you know, I think for the 403B program where it is now, I think we've managed it the best we could, but it's just not anything that, like I said from the beginning, if we would have come and say, let's do a 403B program, we would never just open it up to any vendor that wants to walk in the door, we would go through a transparent process as we have had now. So we're trying to correct kind of where we are because we don't like where we are and how we got there. So we're going to go back, we're trying to correct it through this process.
Yes, sir. Mr. Centani?
I haven't forgotten my question now.
That's never good.
It was a good question, I'm going to think of it.
Yeah, must have been. One of the things that Matt, I'll elaborate on is that, go ahead.
How many other school boards are set up like this and how many other school boards are set up like we currently are? Do we know any of that?
I know Ascension is set up with a one-party vendor. I think a lot of people are going to that, the diocese of Lafayette. For actual school boards, I didn't even poll actually school boards, but I'm thinking a lot of school boards will be moving in this direction, they just haven't kind of pulled the trigger. I mean, Mona and I have been dealing with this, trying to get this done for quite a few years, so, you know, we just finally took the bow by the horns and made it happen. Another thing I forgot to mention when we did look at it, and I got this through two different sources, and it came about to the same thing, a number of fees. So the seven hundred people that are out there right now, when we looked at a comparison of what they're paying for now and what they would be paying for in a scenario we're going, our employees would save about a quarter of a million dollars a year. That's only seven hundred people would save a quarter of a million dollars in fees. That's assuming all thirty-five million would come over. Now, we don't think all thirty-five million is going to come over, but as this thing grows and I see it growing exponentially when we give employees, I think, some better choices, we'll see this thing grow exponentially. So, you know, you look at that, four years, that's a million dollars that would be sitting in the bank accounts or the investment accounts of our employees rather than in fees that were charged to them. So I originally got that number from TSA, they did a kind of a number on it and then Cornerstone kind of gave us a number that was within ten, twenty thousand of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number of an estimate of, that was conservative estimate of fees that would be saved in one year.
Do want to say that we still have some time left to discuss this, but just let's keep in mind that not only the committee, but the board actually voted for the school system. He mentions that they decided, but the board actually decided to hire Argent, a consultant, to put this out in a form of an RFP. So that has pretty much already been decided. I did want Matt, though, to re-explain it so that everyone can understand or at least jog everyone's memory about what we have already decided. But we kind of already decided to go this direction. The board approved to hire Argent, that has been done. This is step one of two steps. This is the advisor portion. We can certainly continue to talk about it because we have time, but I just wanted to remind everyone of that. Do we have any other questions from, please? Oh, well, Mr. Centani, you get to go first.
Well, mine's a little, going to probably be a little bit of a long answer. Can you describe the scoring process of the RFP? How did we arrive at Cornerstone as the recommendation? I hope I got that name right, minimize the sheet.
We basically left the process up to Argent. Argent was hired as the experts to do this. Argent is actually in the business, they would normally be a competitor, they would normally be on this list right here. But as we struggled to try to find a way to do this with transparency, it came to light that we probably need somebody in the industry that knew the terminology and, you know, the front loads, the back loads, I mean, you know, it's really a complicated industry. And so I went to Argent and requested that they do this and that if they were to do this, they had to agree not to bid on it. And frankly, they would have made more money bidding on this. And Argent does all our paying agencies, they're our trustee for a lot of other things. So, you know, I asked Lucius to do this kind of a, you know, for a fee, but to, so that we would have independence and somebody that really knew what they were talking about. So when they came and, you know, they got the results of the RFP, they went over with us over a conference call, not in a moins of a points manner, but in, you know, charges and basically ran some scenarios and all of the people were in relevant range of each other. And it was all about, after that, about who could provide the best service and that became the focus. And, you know, all these three people, Cornerstone has a local office and Dave is here in the back, if he would like to ask him any questions, that we felt that is important, especially for teachers who may want to sit across the desk from somebody that's available, you know, on Johnson Street. So we thought that was an important component. A couple of other things, that's why he made the top, and then when we interviewed them, it was close, but we had a long discussion and felt that the local presence was something that would be valuable to our employees, you know, and felt overall that that's why we came out with the Cornerstone recommendation. I think, unless Mona or you had a different.
I want to just add a little bit, there wasn't a point system like our traditional, like we choose our engineers or like we chose the recycling company. It was based on, first of all, this spreadsheet was full of information, everything was detailed, no one left anything out, otherwise they would have been disqualified. And so when- And so when they, when Argent sat down with this spreadsheet, the goal was to narrow this down to three candidates to physically interview them because they knew that if they, that because all of the ones who submitted proposals, they were all qualified to do the work. Legally, technically, you know, physically qualified. But it came down to who is going to have the best, who's going to give the best service. So there were actually several different game changers. One, of course, was the local presence because we know that folks want to sit in front of someone and don't want to call up on the phone. Well, maybe you and I might want to call up on the phone, but a lot of the older generation employees, employees want to sit in front of someone to do their business. So the local presence, not only that, they actually have, they were the only proposer who has a school system and, well, you can say two school systems because the Diocese has a school system, but they do the Diocese of Lafayette and they do Ascension Parish. No other proposer did business with a school system. Others did do business with other municipalities, but not a school system. They, again, it was when, once it was narrowed down to these three, based upon fees, based upon how many plans they manage, how much, how many assets under management and their business model and structure, once it narrowed down to these three, you know, basically the consultant said, "You can't go wrong with any of them." So that's when we had an all-day affair. Each one of them came in, got interviewed, and it was just a matter of picking who we can work better with. So that's, I hope, answers your question. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just have a few questions. One, how do, how do we play Argent, the consultants that we used?
So the board approved $8,000 at a board meeting a few, probably a couple of few months ago, out of, out of what budget? Out of risk management.
Okay. Is that the health benefits insurance reserve or is it just a risk management budget that's different? Risk management. It doesn't have anything to do with the insurance reserve fund? Okay. I need to know that. The other thing is, I can tell you that I was here when this started because I've been here forever. When it started, the reason why there were different companies that came in is because teachers wanted to see what different companies had to offer. And that's why we had several came in. Because some didn't like this one or didn't like that one or they knew somebody. So that's why we had this hodgepodge of a lot of people. And I can tell you that I did get phone calls, that people that looked at this and they saw there was nothing under Cornerstone and the other two had answered everything, they had a lot of questions. That leads to a lot of distrust because there was no reason, if they did have the questions, that that shouldn't have been on this form. When you download it and it's not there, you say, "Where is it? Did they have it?" And, you know, it, that is not a good form to put out if you don't put out all the information. I will need to know how we're going to pay the watchdog that's going to be watching this. And I want to ask the question that, why can't we look at maybe two companies or three companies? Why just one company? Give the teachers a choice. Because they are getting very, let me say, they're tired of being dictated to. They're getting dictated to about curriculum and you have to teach this and this and this and this. And that's not necessarily the best thing to teach children because you have to adjust your teaching to what the children are learning and how they're learning and you may need to repeat things and this type. So teachers want to have more freedom in what they do. And I can tell you, none of this concerns me because I have my own annuity, you know. I did my own research and I did my own, you know, saving of money. But other people depend on the school board to do this. So if they could at least have a choice, maybe two, you know, three, you know, they don't have to have nine, that's too many. But give them a choice so that, and let them, the two people that are choosing or the three, let them offer the same things. Because I can tell you right now, I've got my statement about my annuity and of course, you know, I have stocks and it's a very thing. And when I got it this year, I was very upset because everything went down. Of course, I'm not cashing anything in, we're just leaving it there forever. But, you know, if they're looking at their annuity and that went down, they wouldn't, do not want to turn it over now or do anything with it. So that's, that's a very delicate thing when you're dealing with that. And I don't know if, you know, they do math, I taught math, so I know a little bit about math. And I know when to get upset and when it goes down, I get upset. So be careful with that when dealing with the teachers. Make sure that they get the right deal. And if you give them just one, they're going to question it. I can tell you right now. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I think one of the biggest, I know one of the biggest disappointments I have with the current structure is, is that it lacks education. There's no education behind any of the decisions that are being made. So one of the things we're going to do is bring education to the table. And in one form of that, I can share with you tonight, is that right now, while you believe because they have nine different vendors, that means they have nine different choices, that is absolutely incorrect. They have nine different vendors and eight different annuities. Within your annuity are investment options. And what this new structure is going to be is basically an endless amount of investment options for these individuals. Not products, but options. So we're actually providing more options. And the greatest thing about this is going to be the education component that our advisor, not provider, but the advisor or maybe both are going to come together and provide to the employees so that they understand what their options really are. Any other questions? Mr. Santani? Yes?
So we're going to have one company that this company chooses to provide the products to the employees? Yes?
No, this company will be in on the interview process, but our firm, the Argent, is still under retainer, under their $8,000. There's, they're going to be within, in the room with the next three presenters because only four providers responded to the RFP. And that's been narrowed down to three, again, based on assets under management, experience, et cetera. And those three will be interviewed much the same, except this time, whoever the advisor firm is will be in on those conversations and have a say-so or at least be able to put in, have some input on who the provider is going to be. So the provider is going to be the person who has the team that's going to come out and physically enroll participants. But I do want to add, one of the things that I appreciated most about Cornerstone is that they too will provide a team to go in with every provider personnel to sit in front of every participant at no additional charge. It will be part of their 25 basis points. So all the other firms would have provided that benefit, but it would have been an additional fee because they were in Houston and New Orleans and Dallas and they would have had to haul people in. But part of Cornerstone's fee will be every time a provider personnel sits in front of one of our participants or the school system's participants, they will also be in the room. So I think there's a lot of safeguards here. And look, we're, the goal here is to try to provide more benefit, save money. We're not, we're not suggesting that any one individual, one of the nine vendors are doing bad business, but because of the scenario. Picture it. You've got nine vendors and they're all trying to go in there and sell something. And that's what it boils down to.
I understand the incentives are out of whack. The incentives are out of whack. The incentive is to get to an employee first rather than make sure that, make sure that the employee is getting what they, what they need. Obviously, Mr. Broussard is an exception to this rule.
I agree.
But I can imagine that there are some people out there that would take a look at this and say, "Well, I'm going to make more money the more people I churn through." So, you know, I understand that. I understand that. So we're going to vote subsequent to this on who the provider is. Yes?
Yes, sir.
That's all, that was basically my question.
Okay. Sorry for the long answer. Any further questions?
I'd like to make a point.
If you don't mind, come into the mic.
I would like to make a couple of points. One, of the 450 people that have the 403B with Horace Mann right now, not all are with a particular fee. So if we look at the number of people in Lafayette Parish, Matt talked about, you know, maybe 40 to 50% would be a good goal to shoot for. And I agree. The more people that participate in the 403B, the more people that are going to be comfortable when they're 65 and 70 years old. The 2,000, that's the number of employees, is that what you're referencing when you, when you reference 2,000? You referenced 2,000. You said, you said something about 2,000.
Right. We're hoping for 2,000 participants, which would be about, right under 50% of the total number eligible.
Of the 4,800, you have a good percentage that are cooks who are not making a lot of money, bus drivers, bus driver attendants, clerks, secretary and so on. So there's a, there's a good percentage, I don't have those numbers, you may have it off the top of your head, maybe 30% of your employees that are probably making under 25,000 a year. And, and those people that are at that income level are not likely candidates. They have to use their dollars to pay the car insurance, the home insurance, the children's clothes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So you, to shoot for even 40%, so if you have 30% of your employees, 30, 35% who don't make enough dollars to contribute to 403B, that leaves only 70% of.
He said 45%.
Pardon me?
Statistic's at 45%. 45%.
Okay. And the percentage nationally, in not only school employees, but, but all employees, about 70% do not have any type of retirement savings. And I think Cornerstone would probably be able to give us some of their statistics. So if nationally in occupations who are paying six to 70, here in the, in the off industry, I run across a lot of people who don't have a 401K at work. And because nobody ever approached them, they're not familiar with it or whatever the case may be. They too limit themselves with where do they invest? Many of them invest in only two or three funds. They have 75 or 100 that they can choose from. They start working, they invest in two or three, and they never change it. So is that any particular person's fault or what are these statistics? If Ascension has 45%, I think if you look nationally, you're going to find lower percentages than that, simply because of the occupations that, that school employees have.
It's all about education.
And, and that is, I agree with you. And I think that if you would check with the 450 people who have annuities with me, that's one of the things that you're going to find, is that I don't go and sit 15 minutes and say, "You can choose this or this or this." I'll spend time with them during free time at school, I'll spend time with them after school, I'll spend time with them periodically during the year. So it's an educational process and, and it's a building of relationships as well. Because as Ms. Sanye said, if there's some degree of mistrust or concern, you know what the person's going to do? Nothing. And that's the worst thing we can do for the employees is to give them that, that question of, "Jesus, this is being forced on me. I, I don't have someone that I could call and visit with or go by the office and visit with after I went to the school board office," this kind of thing. And that's why I have my office across the street, is to provide that service to the employees. So again, that point of percentages that are participating, I question if that's going to be achieved.
Mr. Chair, I move that the interest committee recommend to the full board that we engage Cornerstone Financial Group Incorporated to serve as the school district's investment advisor for the 403B plan.
Second. And since we've had about an hour. Give me the verbiage, contingent upon whatever he said earlier.
Just contingent on contract. We don't have the actual contracts, we have to get the contracts and have attorneys. So contingent on, on agreed-upon contracts. What's the term?
Can you just put contingent upon?
Sure, yeah.
Contract negotiations.
Yeah, what he said. It's fine.
Yes, ma'am, please. Matt, contingent on contract term, contract negotiation. Motion carries. Thank you all for being here and this meeting is adjourned.